Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public hearing of the House Aging and Older Adult Services Committee to order. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded and members and guests should silence their cell phones and electronic devices. I'd also like to remind members of the public watching at home that our members serve on multiple committees, which often require them to juggle various obligations. Occasionally, committee members may overlap, so don't be surprised if you see members coming and going during this meeting. For attendance today, starting on my left, can each committee member say their name and their district they represent?
Representative Nelson, Westmoreland County.
Representative Khan, Philadelphia.
Representative Kozarowski, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
Representative Jessica Benham, Allegheny County.
Representative Russell, Westmoreland County, 56th District.
Representative Brenda Pugh, Luzerne County.
Representative Menzger, Lancaster County.
And Representative Madden, 115th District, in Monroe County. Today's hearing is on House Bill 1670, which would amend the insurance company law to require a health insurance policy or government program to provide coverage for hearing aids sold in accordance with the Hearing Aids Sales Registration Law. The purpose of this meeting is to update members of the committee on this issue and hear testimony from both supporters and opponents of this legislation. Before we get started, I would like to ask the bill's co-prime sponsor, Rep. Hohenstein, if he would like to speak about the bill. And I'd like to inform the members that the prime sponsor is Representative Liz Handbridge, and she's not here this week, so Joe will be stepping in her place. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Chair Madden, and thank you, Chair Menzger. I do bring the prepared statement from my colleague, Liz Handbridge, who, due to illness, was not able to be here in person today. And Rep. Handbridge and I came to this bill in different spaces. For her, there were family members who had had difficulty in getting their hearing aids or in adjusting to having hearing aids as adults. For me, I've had hearing aids pretty much my entire life. I go back to the early '70s, when I was a six-year-old, having to wear a hearing aid on my chest. As a six-year-old, that wasn't exactly the best thing. And I often broke those hearing aids at that time and even lost them occasionally. And I did what kids do. For kids, that's okay. Hearing aids are a covered aspect of Medicaid and most of the other insurance for children who need them. But when people become adults, that's when it gets difficult. So we have introduced this legislation that is really focused on that one simple and profoundly important goal: ensuring older Pennsylvanians do not lose access to hearing aids simply because they cannot afford them. Hearing is foundational to independence, safety, and connection, yet for far too many of our constituents, it is slipping out of reach. We all represent districts with growing older adult populations. Many are retirees, individuals living on fixed incomes. For them, the out-of-pocket cost of hearing aids, often several thousand dollars, and I can attest to that, the pair that I have, $6,000. And I'm fortunate enough to have a nice plan as a member of the State House of Representatives that covered $2,000 of that cost. But still, a significant cost. That's not just a burden. It is an impossible barrier for many people. And when they go without, the consequences are serious. Untreated hearing loss leads to isolation, depression, cognitive decline, increased falls, and poor overall mental health. Those aren't abstract statistics. These are the real struggles that people that we serve are going through. So House Bill 1670 takes a responsible, balanced approach to addressing this need. It amends the insurance company law of 1921 to strengthen hearing aid coverage across Pennsylvania. Specifically, it will require insurers underwriting Medicare and Medicaid in our state to cover hearing aids under the Hearing Aids Sales Registration Law. It will mandate that health insurance policies make available a minimum benefit of $2,500 for a hearing aid every three years, which is actually just a little bit better than our current policy that I just described, which provides $2,000 every three years. And that would begin with the person's first year in enrollment. It clarifies definitions and ensures that individuals may use this benefit with a licensed hearing aid seller or certified fitter. Having professional audiologists is essential in this process because they help people to adjust to having hearing aids. For many older adults, that is also an issue, and having someone who is a professional in the field be able to help them to process all of the different types of aids that are out there and all of the different ways in which they can be used is really essential. And finally, the bill will apply the standards of these government programs and private policies that meet a defined criteria. So this is all about fairness, about giving older Pennsylvanians the same dignity and access we already support when we talk about other essential health needs. And it is also importantly about smart economics. Improving access to hearing aids reduces downstream costs. There will be fewer hospitalizations, fewer falls, fewer mental health crises, and it will help older adults remain active, engaged, and in many cases, employed. By establishing a nice fixed benefit level, we provide meaningful support for patients while also offering cost predictability for insurers and for the Commonwealth. It is a practical, fiscally responsible solution to a widespread problem. Colleagues, hearing health is not a partisan issue, and I appreciate all of the members of the committee here in a bipartisan way being here. This is a basic quality of life issue. It affects families in every corner of our state. And I'm asking you, along with my co-prime sponsor, Representative Handbridge, to support HB 1670 so that we can send a clear message. Pennsylvania values the health, independence, and dignity of our older adults, and that includes their hearing. Thank you for your time and consideration, chairs, and I hope that you will all be able to stay and listen to the wonderful folks that we have presenting on this bill today.
Thank you, Representative Hohenstein, for your remarks. I'd like to mention that Representative Lisa Borowski is with us now, and virtually we have Representative Shelby Labs. So let's get on to the wonderful testifiers that we have. Panel one, we're inviting Dr. Nicole Belak, I hope I said that right, and Dr. James Schaefer. Dr. Nicole Belak is the Pennsylvania Speech Language Hearing Associate from Pennsylvania Speech Language Hearing Association, and Dr. Schaefer is from the Pennsylvania Academy of Audiology. Let me mention that Dr. Belak is virtual. Did you want to go first?
Sure, we can go first. That sounds good. Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Nicole Belak. I am the president of the Pennsylvania Speech Language Hearing Association, known as Pisha. We represent more than 1,000 audiologists and speech-language pathologists over the Commonwealth who are dedicated to helping Pennsylvanians communicate and connect with the world around them. Pisha offers our strong support for House Bill 1670, which would require the insurance companies to cover hearing aids. Hearing aids, when properly fitted, programmed, and supported by a certified audiologist, are not just devices. They are life-changing, public health tools. Untreated hearing loss is linked to depression, cognitive decline, and even dementia, leading to higher costs of treatment in the future. Professional audiological services that ensure these devices are used effectively. Research will show limited benefit over-the-counter devices have when they're not used with professional guidance. By including both hearing aids and the essential audiological care that supports them, you can minimize the health, health effects, increase independence, and the quality of life for thousands of Pennsylvanians. I would like to introduce next Dr. Akilah Rajappa, who is also a Pisha vice president.
Good morning, everyone. I hope you can hear me, yes. My name is Dr. Rajappa. I'm actually going to be talking on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Susan Miller, who's a clinical audiologist and a researcher. So as we all know, hearing loss effects, from our clinical data, like 48 million Americans, including one in three adults over the age of 65. It's not just a volume problem. Most adults lose high-frequency sounds first, which actually impairs clarity and speech discrimination. So this is why many older adults actually say people, you know, mumble. Untreated hearing loss is far from being benign. It's associated with depression, social isolation, reduced unemployment, higher healthcare use, and increased dementia risk. These are all preventable burdens. And hearing aids are the standard treatment, but professionally-fitted hearing aids cost about $2,000 to $8,000 per pair. The FDA recently approved the over-the-counter hearing aids in 2022 to improve affordability for mild to moderate hearing loss. But these over-the-counter devices actually comes with no diagnostic exam or no customization or no professional support. We have data to show that many older adults cannot correctly select, program, or troubleshoot them, and they're not appropriate for majority of complex or medically treatable hearing loss. And many individuals actually spend money on devices that, we're actually spending money on devices that actually don't help and delay the medical intervention. So it's essential that audiologists are the professionals who actually assist and treat them and support these hearing aid interventions because they provide the essential evaluation, programming, counseling, and follow-up that ensure people actually benefit. In fact, research shows that 80% of the over-the-counter users eventually seek professional help. So OTC devices can expand access, but professional hearing care remains critical for safe and effective treatment. And not only that, we would also like to highlight on the fact that why expanding access to hearing aids for Pennsylvanian seniors is both a health equity priority and a smart financial investment. A major WHO health study shows that for every $1 you spend in investing on hearing aid actually returns a $15 in societal benefit, in the sense it improves quality of life, reduces disability, and greater productivity. For seniors who are living on fixed incomes, this is a high-value intervention that directly supports healthy aging. If they hear better, they also achieve higher health literacy. That way, they're actually keeping them in the community and not ending up in hospital, which increases medical care cost. And we also know that not treating hearing loss actually raises healthcare costs in general. For example, a national, you know, Journal of Medical Audiology study found that adults with untreated hearing loss, they incur 46% in higher healthcare cost, which is amounting to about $22,000 more over 10 years. They're also more likely to be hospitalized and readmitted. So addressing hearing loss can actually lower healthcare's overall spending in our state. And finally, I would like to state that hearing aids are not just about hearing, they protect health. So research from our recent American Geriatric Society shows that hearing aid use is actually linked to an 18% lowering the risk of dementia, 11% lowering the risk of depression or anxiety, and 13% it lowers the risk of fall-related injury injuries. So expanding hearing aid coverage isn't just doing the right thing for seniors, it's actually cost-effective and an evidence-based strategy that improves health while reducing long-term healthcare expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Schaefer?
There we go. So the past two people have maybe taken some of my thunder away. So what I'm going to do is try to kind of fill in the blanks and the voids. So first of all, I want to thank the committee for listening to this testimony because I think it's very, very important. I've been an audiologist for a long time, since 1984. I've served on the Board of Examiners, State Board of Examiners for Speech, Language, and Pathology, and as well as the Pennsylvania Academy of Audiology. And my current role is VP of Governmental Affairs. So what I'd like to do is kind of fill in the gaps and fill in the voids that we have here. So that the, currently, there's two groups that can dispense hearing aids. There's audiologists who, since 19, or excuse me, 2007, required to have a doctoral degree as an entry-level degree. In the state of Pennsylvania, it started off as a bachelor's degree back in the '70s, expanded to master's, and now has expanded to a doctoral degree. So that's, the two groups are audiologists and then hearing aid dispensers. Hearing aid dispensers have not expanded their scope to a large degree or their education, but they are covered by the Hearing Aid Registration Law Act 262 from 1976. So that, there was talking about the OTC versus hearing aids. So recently, the FDA has confused the large masses by keeping the same term as hearing aids, but what they mean by that is over-the-counter hearing aids. So as was stated, that there is no quantitative evaluation necessary to purchase an over-the-counter hearing aid. It is something that the consumer can choose by picking a box off the shelf. It's for mild to moderate hearing loss, but nobody defines that, what mild to moderate really is for the consumer. The return rate is at least three times that of regular hearing aids, which are now called prescriptive hearing aids. And I've heard up to 75%. My opinion is that the significant other goes to the drugstore, grabs a box, and says, "You need this." And that's one of the reasons that the return rate is so high. I don't want this. So the, so the prescriptive hearing aids are what the dispensers and audiologists prescribe to the patient based upon the evaluation that we do on a consistent basis. The misconception that I find for a lot of people is that the, that one size fits all, that that's not the case. There's many layers of technology that are available to the individual, and the individual's hearing loss, their lifestyle, their issues are what guide the prescriptive process. And the price of hearing aids is based upon, first of all, the manufacturer's cost of goods. The higher the level of technology, the higher the cost. Basically, I tell my patients that what you're purchasing is a computer, and you choose which level of computer that you want to have based upon your communication needs. So that covers the cost of goods themselves. The initial programming of the instrument to determine what the best outcome is for that individual. We have the fitting of the device, showing them how to use it, how to take care of it, make sure that they can put it in properly. And new technology also connects directly to cell phones, so that you have an app, and that's created all kinds of Bluetooth issues that we've had with patients themselves. And then the follow-up instruction is usually a two-to-week process after that, and then routine follow-ups. Typically, they're dependent upon the needs, but at least biannually for the period, warranty period, which can last anywhere from one year to four years, depending upon the level of technology and what the manufacturers offer. Typical care is that they bundle all these prices under one umbrella, and that's why people say, "Well, hearing aids cost too much." Well, they cover all those services for that period of time. So from a one-to-four-year warranty period, we cover all those services under that one plan or one cost. Current trends with insurance is no coverage, only specific models regardless of the need, a percentage of the allowed amount, but that's never defined of what that allowed amount is, to a set benefit in a certain replacement timeframe. As you heard earlier, the state has a program that's $2,000 every three years. So untreated hearing loss, or what all this can potentially lead to is untreated hearing loss, poorly-treated hearing loss, confusion by the consumer and provider, and a complexity and delays of the fitting process that's not needed. One of the newer trends is a third-party supplier. Typically, these suppliers are privately owned or owned by manufacturers, and this leads also to a conflict of interest, in my opinion. They work with limited amounts of providers. Most, if not all, healthcare networks do not participate with third-party suppliers. More, the recent ones are, the closer ones are Penn State and UPMC. They reduce availability of treatment, inappropriate referrals, and poor outcomes. Testimony has been presented by the medical assistance, the often medical assistance, saying the impact of this bill may be upwards of $3 million. Currently, they cover under age 21 based upon their unit cost of about $92 per unit. They didn't really define what a unit really was. For over-21, it's about $67. In my, in my experience with the, working with medical assistants... In my in my experience with the working with medical assistance is that there it's very difficult to provide high-quality service with the current level of reimbursement because as technology goes up, costs go up with that, and their program does not generally cover these services, which leads to a reduction of providers in the Commonwealth. One of the issues related to children, I know this is not the Committee for Children, but the is that they say the cost of school of an untreated hearing loss costs the schools upwards of $420,000 a year, and a lifetime cost of approximately $1 million for that individual. The secondary part of that is that they're also likely to lose educational process and lose a grade of upward of 24 to 35% compared to their peers at 3%. As you've heard earlier, is that the unaffected or the untreated hearing loss can reduce to add to reduced wage earning potential, social isolation, depression, anxiety, increased falls and related injuries due to sedentary lifestyle, dementia. I'm going to focus just a little bit on the downhill costs related to dementia. Since 2005, Dr. Lynn from Johns Hopkins identified a correlation between hearing loss and dementia. And this has been more and more research has been done that has confirmed this. They estimate that that 8% of all dementia cases have the only risk factor involved of being dementia. I'm sorry, being hearing loss leading to their dementia. According to the PA.gov agency, which is online, there's approximately 400,000 people that have dementia in the Commonwealth. If we use that number and take 8% of that, that's approximately 32,000 people. The average cost of care on an annual basis is $85,000, $85,000 per year. If we could save 32 or 8% of that, that's over $2 billion in the Commonwealth itself. For an individual, over a 30-year period, that's over $2 million for that individual as far as covered costs. House Bill 1670 for the same 30-year period would be approximately $37,500. So it's a everything comes down to economics, but it has two paths. It's a good bill to support the aging population of Pennsylvania, and it's also a cost-effective goal itself. The goal of PAA is to help secure these benefits towards the purchase of, and I find that as a key statement because it allows the individual to make the decision about what type of technology that they're looking for and how much service that they would like to have with the hearing aids themselves. So we're not looking for the total cost of the hearing aids because it's not just hearing aids, it's everything involved with it to make it work well. So we're looking to have that as an option for the individual to make their own decisions. Do I thank you for your time and your consideration of House Bill 1670? And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Extremely helpful. Does anyone have any questions? Chair Menzger, do you have any questions? Okay, okay. Rep. Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate both the online and the in-person testimony and, you know, my good friend and colleague, the work that you have on the on the bill. Hearing loss is an emotional issue. We were walking here together, talking about, you know, just those challenges of seniors, family members. My question is if, you know, as I was running through the number of adults, 3.5 million in Pennsylvania approximately, if we have one in three from the earlier testimony that fall into that hearing loss category, $2,500 a payment is about $2.5 billion of cost over that three-year cycle, give or take. The online testifier had said that there is some, are there some tangible studies or pilots that actually show the cost savings that she could refer to supply to the committee? You know, it's a it's an important issue, but as we balance, you know, how that $2.5 billion, you know, is there can she can you touch on more specifically? You mentioned the cost savings. I know there's a, you know, the dementia scenario that it could be, do have other states done this and shown proven reduction in costs?
So I can certainly share, these are articles from recent studies, like this was done in Journal of the American Geriatric Society in 2019, and there's one other, these are all journalistic studies, not specific for the Pennsylvania state. Another one is from the Lancet, which is a very important journal in 2022. Another one is from the Journal of Auto-lyinggology and Head-onic Surgery in 2019. So these are solid studies which have been done within the last five years showing this data, and I can certainly share the references with all of you.
That would be great. Thank you. And I'd just like to mention that we've been joined by Representative Pew and Representative Rivera.
Yeah, thank you, Chairwoman Madden. Mine's not a question, it's more of a statement, and it's it's an addition to Representative Nelson. Since since being an elected official here and working here, you can't imagine the number of times we've had people who are promoting their particular issue tell us, you know, for every dollar you spend, you save $14. And after being here for a while, I can't understand why we have a $50 billion budget because it seems like we should have no budget. So, you know, I appreciate what Representative Nelson's saying, and we would like to see that. Another question I have, and you explained it very well, but I have a friend who, you know, felt like he had some hearing issues. And so he talked to one of his friends, and they suggested he go see someone. He did. And there he got a proposal of, I think it was a $4,500 hearing aid. He decided then to check with his local Costco, which I think they have an audiologist there. And he felt as though he pretty much got the same thing for $1,500. So, you know, I guess, you know, I hear what you're saying, but it seems like there's an awful lot of wiggle room here.
Well, let me let me go to the Costco scenario directly. And it was used to be Sam's Club, all those different had inexpensive hearing aids. The majority of people that working within the Costcos or the big-box stores are not audiologists. There's very few, actually. And the other issue is too, is they basically go to manufacturers to private-label their hearing aids, and that and they take a hybrid technological approach to the device itself. So they have a very limited number of hearing aids available at a lower cost. A perfect example of what's going on right now with Costco is that they currently use a company called Rexton. Rexton is only available in Europe. So that the issue is that if they have a Costco hearing aid, the only software, which is proprietary to Costco for adjustments, is going back to Costco directly. So if there's a if they're if they're not happy with the outcome that they're getting, then they don't have any recourse beyond getting new hearing aids from someone else so that they can program them. So there might be a cost savings, and I would say that there are a percentage of patients that are perfectly happy with that. And as I studied earlier, there's a wide range of hearing aids that are available based upon the patient's communication concerns and their hearing loss. So there are the more sophisticated or more difficult hearing losses, the more disadvantage they have with what's called speech recognition in a wide variety of situations. Not one size does not fit all. So there definitely are a percentage of the population that can go with with lower-cost hearing aids and very little service, or there's a group that needs the more of the service itself. Thank you.
Representative Pew, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. So you've kind of hit on a lot of stuff that affected my life for a very long time with a father-in-law who had dementia and who had some hearing issues and disabilities, and kind of found that some of the doctors that we originally went to didn't have outlets for him to go if his insurance didn't cover it, like check here, check there, where with the VA, they are covered, especially a soldier who's got even a 10% disability rating on it. Of the number that you're talking, are they including our veterans sources?
As far as the number of patients that have hearing loss?
Correct.
It would be covered of that, yes.
It's covered underneath that number.
Yeah, so I didn't break out the VA versus the general public.
Okay. Just because I know there's other avenues that people can go in order to get the hearing aids because we had to travel them in order to get them at a point in time when his insurance company, you know, did not cover it, but we were able to find it. And then sometimes I find, especially in his case, he had hearing aid before the onset of dementia, and he didn't like to wear it. So that was always the fear, okay, Dad, you we paid for this, it helps you, you can hear my voice, but you can't hear the kids, which is, you know, tones higher than mine was. So that's always the concern that they won't put it in.
And what we're also looking at too is that the if you if you address hearing loss earlier, you sometimes don't run into the problems that you just described. So that the longer that someone waits to be fit, the more the brain kind of gets lazy, and that the capability to recoup some of the, as I talked earlier, the speech recognition side of things is more and more difficult to do, especially in more complex listening situations where there's background noise. You talked about the younger voices. It's not only the pitch, it's also sometimes the rate of how quickly they talk. So that that affects the processing of the of the incoming information. So what the hope is that if there is a direction or a way of getting hearing devices earlier, that you won't have as much problem. If you can maintain the communication capability early, the brain accepts amplification over time more effectively as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one quick question. Both my parents died from complications of vascular dementia. And when I was taking care of my mother for about 15 years, at no point did any doctor ask, you know, get a hearing test. They asked her if she had any problems hearing, they didn't prescribe a hearing test. Is there a disconnect between audiologists and doctors who are treating people with dementia that they're not working together?
There is a disconnect at the primary care level, for sure. So that that 60% of patients that start their journey with hearing loss start at the primary care level, but only 15% of any of the primary cares do any screening type of activities beyond asking them specifically, "Do you have any problems?" Well, no. When you start to lose hearing initially, you typically lose high frequencies first rather than the lower bass sounds. Lower bass sounds are what give volume to speech, but the high frequencies give clarity. So when you ask somebody, "Do you have trouble hearing?" "No, I can hear fine." I just wish they would mumble, you know, because that's the issue. So there is definitely a disconnect in the early identification of patients to get them into the hands of the audiologist. There is also a secondary issue of over-referring into ENT audiology offices so for situations that may be able to be identified more readily at the primary care level. So there's a time issue and a volume issue as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Do we have any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to panel two. Thank you. Panel two, which consists of Megan, right? Megan Barber, Executive Director of Government Affairs for the Insurance Federation of Pennsylvania.
There we go. Thank you, Chair Madden, and good morning. Good morning, Chair Menzger, and members of the House Aging and Older Adult Services Committee, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. As Chair Madden said, I am Megan Barber, and I am the Executive Director of Government Affairs for the Insurance Federation. And we are a trade association that represents insurers offering all lines of insurance in Pennsylvania, including health. And I am here today to respectfully express opposition to House Bill 1670, which would mandate insurance coverage for hearing aids for private health insurers. And while the Federation does fully support exploring solutions and efforts to improve access to hearing care, we do believe that this bill also raises serious concerns about affordability coverage, sustainability of the proposed solution, as well as presents potential unintended consequences for Pennsylvania's older adults, as well as the broader insured population. As my colleague mentioned earlier, hearing aids can cost thousands of dollars per pair, and requiring insurers to cover these devices and the care that goes along with them will inevitably lead to an increase in premiums for all policyholders. And although this is especially concerning for older adults who live and sustain on fixed incomes, as well as other vulnerable populations who already significantly struggle with rapidly rising healthcare premiums. And although undoubtedly and certainly well-intentioned, mandating additional coverage through House Bill 1670 is also poorly timed, given the affordability crisis that we are facing in healthcare as a whole. This year alone, the Pennsylvania Insurance Department approved an average rate increase of 19% for the individual market and 13% for small-group plans. And these increases are directly attributed to rising healthcare costs, increase of utilization of benefits, as well as the end of the enhanced premium tax credits, which I'm sure you are all incredibly familiar with, as they've been the subject of a nationwide debate and the recent federal government shutdown. These premium tax credits are expiring at the end of 2025, and with that, extremely unfortunately, millions of Americans, including small-business owners, middle-income families, gig workers, and more, will face premium hikes of up to 114%. And in Pennsylvania, we are seeing rate hikes as high as 485%. And these subsidies have been absolutely critical in keeping coverage affordable for many Americans. And their loss will push people out of market entirely. And so we revert back to, if health insurance is plain unaffordable without this support, then perhaps it's not the coverage that's the issue, but it's actually the underlying cost of the care that is driving the premium increases that we are seeing. And adding new mandates like House Bill 1670 will undoubtedly compound the financial burden that we are seeing on consumers and on insurers, and we will see premiums continue to increase year for year as we have been. And so we believe that instead of looking at new mandates, we should explore solutions that marry compassion for the individuals experiencing these issues with maintaining affordability for the broader general population over time, and simultaneously looking at the root causes of what is driving this medical care to be so expensive in the first place. And so coverage other than what is mandated by the Affordable Care Act through the essential health benefits, the Federation believes that should be left up to the insurers who know the population that they are covering, who know the needs and demands of that market, as well as what it can tolerate, so that we can keep healthcare affordable for all Pennsylvanians. So thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. I've got a couple of questions here.
Is it my, it's my understanding that if someone is dual-eligible, eligible for Medicare and Medicaid, there are arrangements for reimbursement for hearing aids? Is that correct?
We can certainly look into that. As the Federation, we represent private health insurers, as opposed to Medicare and Medicaid, and we actually only cover 20% of the market, so I just don't want to speak out of turn on those policies.
Another, so if you could get back to me on that, Medicare and Medicaid. I'm wondering whether you might want to comment on, you know, this idea that, that the costs of, of hearing aids seem to be all over the map. There's, you know, there's $1,500 hearing aids, and there's $8,000 hearing aids, and I get it, but there's so much wiggle room in there that it seems to me it would be very difficult for, for someone to even come up with a, a top limit on, on the cost of hearing aid. Has the Insurance Federation done enough research with their, the population they represent to determine what they would think would be a reasonable limit if we were going to, to, you know, mandate this coverage?
That's a great question, and we can certainly check with our members. I think to, to your point, that is one of the problems with legislating any particular number, is that the insurers represent differing populations, and that's why they're priced at the individual level, and even within a particular insurer, there are certain benefit designs that have to be taken into consideration based on the risk of the population that that insurer represents.
Representative Khan?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barber, for your testimony. Would the Insurance Federation say that the ability to communicate with family, with doctors, with your nurses, is a luxury or a matter of dignity?
Can you expand on that, Representative?
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it like, is it a luxury? Like, for example, having a nice car, or, you know, having a nice watch is a luxury, right? The ability to breathe air is, is dignity. So would you say that the ability to have access to communicate to one's family, to one's nurses, to one's, you know, friends, is a matter of luxury or a matter of dignity?
I, I would say that on behalf of the Federation, we certainly believe that all people should have the right to dignity. I will also say that one of the challenges of existing in the insurance space is that insurers have to weigh and be pragmatic about the care that they cover, so that healthcare can be affordable for the broader population.
But you also determine who gets to access things like hearing aids, which will allow them to communicate, correct?
That is decided by the individual insurer, yes.
Right, which is who you represent.
Correct.
So by opposing the ability for people to get access to hearing aids, you are in fact denying them the ability to have dignity.
Respectfully, I would disagree with that statement. I'm saying, I, I don't think that we are saying that people do not have the right to access hearing aids. I think that what we are saying is that insurers are in the position to determine the coverage that is in the best benefit of the entire population that they represent. And by adding coverage mandates for hearing aids and for other medical care as well, that also increases the premiums for other members that might, as we are currently seeing, drive them out of the market. And so it's a consistent balancing act that, that is the job of insurance companies to do, and the members that we represent is to make those extremely difficult decisions.
So you, you realize, though, that by excluding certain people from getting access to these devices, to be able to hear, to be able to listen, and to be able to communicate, you are denying that care to people. So certain people who have insurance are able to hear, and other people that have it, because of your opposition, won't be able to have it. I mean, do you realize that, though, right?
We, we are open, as I said in my testimony, we are certainly open to conversations and exploring solutions other than mandating coverage for every private insurer that would improve access to hearing care for all individuals.
Where this is an issue is that, I'm a healthcare provider, and I see patients, and some patients have problems hearing, some patients have problems seeing, some patients have mobility issues. And if I were to deny someone the ability to get access to an assistive device to walk, I would be denying them access to independence, okay? If I deny someone the ability to have a hearing aid, they're not going to be able to hear. And I think the, the reality and something to, to understand is that by saying that, well, we're just not going to pay for it, you know, we're not going to deny, you're, you're allowed to, this is America. The reality is that people, when they can't get access to something because their insurance isn't covering it, they have to pay out of pocket. And as you mentioned, the, the fact that insurance rates are going up because Washington refused to extend the Affordable Care Act subsidies, people are unable to get access to care because they can't afford to spend out-of-pocket $8,000, $9,000, $10,000, $10,000, or $1,000, $2,000, or a few hundred, depending on what the, what the cost is, out-of-pocket. And that's why insurance is so important. So by not working together, because if you allow people to have it, you'll be able to bring down those costs, because you're going to be spreading it over an entire population, so that instead of one person having to spend $1,000 or $2,000 to get hearing aids, it's going to be a lot cheaper, because it's spread across the risk pool. And so I, I would, I would just say that by opposing this legislation, and by saying, you know, that, that people can't access, certain people can't access this, the people who can't pay, pay for it, which are generally low-income, you are essentially denying people access to hearing, because to say that someone can go outside and just pay for it out-of-pocket, people can't afford to do that, and so they don't get it. And so I'm someone who believes in, that all men are created equal, and that, and that part of what we should expect is that people should have basic access to healthcare and, and life, right? Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Basic access to life and, and health and safety, and I think that it's not safe to deny people, especially when that's the job of insurance companies, is to provide healthcare, to deny them access to hearing, so.
Thank you. Representative Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me all right there?
I can.
It's ironic in here. So, a couple of different questions that you had mentioned, because you're representing private insurance market. What percentage of that, you know, of Pennsylvania is covered in the private insurance?
About 20% of the market.
Okay, so you're 20%. And are you aware if, in community health choices, you know, CHC or the life program, do those markets cover? I know it's not your area specialty, but, yes, did they, are they currently provided in CHC?
I, I will let their testimony speak to that. I, I just don't want to misspeak.
Okay, I don't know that they're testifying today, though. It's, oh, did they? Okay, all right. So I thought Representative Pugh had a, a great question on the, or the example of veterans, you know, I was infantry demolition tank loader, we had, you know, some awesome weapon systems, but they were like 164 decibels to fire, you know, or more. Given that veteran population of having hearing coverage and, you know, it's kind of a captured audience, have, again, it may cross over, because a number of veterans also have private insurance, but have we seen that population experience lower levels of dementia, you know, other health savings? Because I, my understanding is even that population that has the insurance, and definitely high-end hearing aids are a benefit to people. You know, the Bluetooth capability to connect, you know, and be able to talk on the phone, there's, there's enormous life benefits. I'm just, has the, has the Federation been aware of, of smaller pockets of groups that for a long time have had this coverage, and they've seen lower costs?
We can certainly look into that for you, and I will mention that of our member companies, several do provide full coverage for hearing aids. Others offer it as an add-on to large group benefits, and currently only one of our members excludes it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Balak, did you have a question, or did you want to say something?
I, I, we actually are, we're going to pass it over to Dr. Susan Dillmuth Miller, who is joining us now. She's an audiologist with Pisha, so she would like to give an example, if that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Susan, we can't hear you.
All right, what about now? Okay.
Yep.
I know, like, with over-the-counter hearing aids, that was an, you know, attempt to make the hearing aids more accessible and affordable. I know that 70%, though, of elderly people still do not have $500 that they can spend on even a lower-end, over-the-counter device. You know, insurance, as we talked about, does not cover that. I was wondering if the insurance companies have, have looked at the VA model, you know, we talked about that, the big box stores, being able to purchase in bulk or make contracts with hearing aid companies to lower costs. If that would be an avenue, has that been explored, and would that be a possible avenue then to reduce the cost, so then you would consider the hearing aid coverage, since it's so desperately needed for our elderly people?
That, that is a great question, and that's a good example of one of the things that I think falls into the category of insurers are certainly open to exploring solutions to expand access to hearing care, other than through a blanket mandate.
I just want to speak to the, to of the importance of services. 80% of those people who have purchased hearing aids over the counter still require services. They have sought out services from hearing care professionals for fittings, for, you know, hearing testing, because Medicare does not cover hearing tests for the purpose of fitting hearing aids. So many people underestimate, in fact, 70% underestimate the amount of hearing loss that they do have, and they purchase then the over-the-counter hearing aids when, when indeed they're not candidates for them. So the services go hand-in-hand with the hearing aids, because it's a matter of, you know, testing, it's a matter of fitting, it's a matter of instruction, how to use it, follow-up care when your hearing changes. So, you know, even, you know, in the attempt of over-the-counter, 80% still seek out services. And after they've sought out services, the satisfaction rate increases dramatically, according to the Government Accountability Office report. It goes up to 73% after some services are, are provided from a professional. However, we know that satisfaction is not the same as benefit. I mean, you could be satisfied by eating a whole bag of chocolate, but will that benefit your body? Similar to hearing aids. You know, you might feel satisfied, maybe because your, your, you know, expectations are low, however, the, the benefit is, does it actually improve speech recognition? Does it actually, you know, improve your ability to understand in, in speech and noise? You know, that's different than satisfaction.
Thank you so much. Rep. Pugh, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I, I want to comment on, as a business owner, since 2015, my insurance rates have, when I did own the company, skyrocketed year after year after year. It was a constant increase, as a small business owner, to the point that my employees and their families used to have 100% coverage from our company, which we were very proud of, and one of the reasons we had the retain rate that we had. With the rates and the way that they were constantly increasing, that changed. They had to start paying into their insurance in order for us, as a small business, was able to maintain insurance coverage for them and for their families. And that hasn't changed. It went onto an age base, and it's just started going through the roof. We were not able to keep the plan we had. Something, you know, and I do know, having a mother, I call this experiences age. The Medicare Advantage, I believe, covers $500 to $3,000 in this process for hearing aids. I know this because I was helping my mom trying to pick her different programs. My concern is, I'd really like to see the, the strong data on those that have the Medicare Advantage, those that have the veterans' coverages, and get them out of the numbers of those that are not qualifying for everything. I'm kind of comparing it to yes and no. We talked about, you know, vision here. How many of us are actually wearing cheaters, or are we wearing eyeglasses from a doctor? I can tell you, I get the ones that are included with my coverage when it comes to my frame. If I want something more elaborate, I have to pay for that out-of-pocket. It's not covered, and that's something that we've come to accept. And I want everybody to be able to hear. I, I do think it's worth looking into. I think there's a way we can get this done, maybe looking at the VA formula and getting something done. But I do believe that if we are going to embrace this, we need to do it in a way that is good for the small businesses in our communities that are employing our people, for the insurance companies, and for the seniors that need these aids. So I, I'm hoping we can work together to get something done in that model. I, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
We are certain open, certainly open to conversations and exploring all kinds of solutions, so happy to continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Pugh, for that thoughtful commentary. So I'm not really sure at what point we believe people don't need to see, don't need to hear, and don't need their teeth, right? But we do a grave injustice to our seniors by not covering hearing aid, hearing aids. And think about the seniors who can't work, right? Even a job, even a sales job, a retail job, or continuing the job that they're doing because they have the aptitude to do the job, they just cannot hear, right? What would happen if my colleague, Joe Hohenstein, who I rely on, who I am so honored to serve with, couldn't hear, right? So the idea that when the Affordable Care Act was imagined, younger people would pay a little more so we could take care of those in the twilight of their life, correct? And over the years, we've dismantled that, and we, we know we have, because you've said it. And so the solution is, because we've dismantled the Affordable Care Act, because no one can now access affordable healthcare, there's just, hearing aids are completely out of their grasp, they might as well just forget about it, right? I don't buy that. I don't believe it, I don't think it's, it's at all a solution, and I'm hearing you saying over and over and over again, well, that's certainly something we could look at. And Rep. Nelson gave tremendous suggestions around the VA, and Representative Pugh expressed, as a small business owner, how difficult it was for them not to cover people 100%. And I'm hearing you say over and over again, we can certainly look at that, but how long have we had this issue? When are we going to certainly start looking at it? Because now we're at a critical point, right? Healthcare is unaffordable, it's inaccessible for so many people, and hearing aids are just out of the realm. It's like teeth, right? You get old, you start losing your teeth, you can't afford to go to the dentist. I'm not sure at what age we stop taking care of our seniors, and at what age insurance companies throw up their hands and say, "We can't help you, we just don't have the access, we can't let all of our other, you know, clients have their insurance go up." But we're going to pursue this, we're going to continue to pursue it, and I sincerely hope you become part of the solution, that you reach out to your insurer, your insurers, and become part of the solution. Because this isn't something that I, as the Majority Chairwoman of Aging and Older Adult Services, is willing to have one hearing and be one and done. It's a, it's something we're passionate about, it's something we care about, and it's something that seniors deserve. It's something that everyone deserves, to be able to hear a bird, to be able to hear the rain, right? To be able to hear the laughter of your grandchildren. So I really hope that we do work together, and I really hope we do find solutions, and we find affordable solutions, because I believe they are out there. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, this hearing is adjourned. Oh, is there one more question? We're good? Okay. Joe, did you want to add something?
Real briefly, because I think there's...
We're ahead of schedule, so real briefly would be great.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for all of your questions, Chair Menzger, Representative Pugh. I was a small business owner. I was a small business owner and saw those skyrocketing health insurance premiums, and we had to make similar, very difficult decisions. And I think one of the things that I appreciate about this conversation is that acknowledgement about the Faustian choice, really, that we're either providing care or we're not, and how the expenses and everything play into that. One thing I will say is, when we were looking at where that line is for what the benefit is, we did try to work out that balance between not paying for the Cadillacs, like I've got in my ear, you know, $6,000 hearing aids, with all different types of wonderful settings that I need as a lawyer and a legislator to be able to hear in a variety of environments, versus something that is more simple, that somebody might just need, so that they can listen to the radio or the TV without driving their spouse bonkers, which happened in my mom and dad's household. I'm not going to say which one is doing which. But the idea that there is this range of the product that will help and provide the service, we need to have the conversation, and I really appreciate Chairwoman Madden for acknowledging that we need to have this conversation. I'm ready to have it with you all in the Insurance Federation as well, because we do have to find some way to make sure that our seniors are able to have that level of dignity in their lives. And also, again, extending their useful employment time as a result of being able to get access to some of this care is also going to be really key as well. So thank you all for doing this, and we'll continue to work.
Thank you, Joe. And we always value stakeholder feedback and stakeholder participation to make something better, right? We don't ever envision the first draft of a bill is the perfect bill. We always are looking for input from stakeholders and from people who know in the industry. So certainly, as we continue to work on this bill, we do look forward to your input. Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.